I'm going to call the order. Our council meeting, please join me for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sylvia, go call.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Council President Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Henderson?
Here.
Counselor King is here via conference call.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Kuiper?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Sylvia. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? None? Motion carries. We move on to consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. We have a presentation tonight for an Eagle Scout. I do not know if he is present. Adrian Moons, are you here tonight? Okay, we didn't get an RSVP, but we will send him his certificate. Congratulations to Adrian, if you are watching. Nice job. And we have citizen comments. I do have a couple-
Mayor, before we get to citizen comments, we have the swearing-in of the police officer, which is not on the agenda, but we usually would do that during this time.
Absolutely. Chief Growth.
Thank you Mayor, Counsel. Wireless and strong. So it is my pleasure tonight to swear in our newest police officer, Officer Chris Pierce. So Chris, why don't you come up and sit front and center while I talk about you for just a couple minutes? And then Chris also has some family here that I'm going to let him introduce in the back of the room. Officer Pierce is originally from the Warrenton, Oregon area. He attended college at Oregon State University, earning a Bachelor of Science in Speech Communication. And prior to coming to us, he worked at Costco and has also quite a bit of experience, as you can probably figure out, in the fitness arena as a trainer and actually was a co-owner of a fitness facility in the area here. So Chris competed against about 100 other applicants for the first position we filled and rose to the top as a recruit applicant, beating out other applicants that had police experience. So he did a tremendous job. And we're obviously very high on him. He's a tremendous young man. So before we get to the official stuff, why don't you take a second, Chris, and introduce your family? Just push down on that little button there.
Working. All right, in the back of the room here on the left-hand side, if you guys want to stand easier this way, you're on the spot. Standing right is my father, Jim Pierce. He's a retired Oregon State Police Officer. My mother Debbie, to his right. My sister is in the back of the room filming and recording this right now. So I expect a great video. And my girlfriend Natalie is in the back corner. My nephew Alex came with my sister, but he went to a family friend's house to enjoy the rest of the evening.
Great, thank you. And thank you all for coming. I know it means an awful lot to Chris and it also means a lot to us to have you here supporting him. And as Chris said, he came about this decision probably somewhat naturally, having grown up with a father that served with the state police. So, okay, with that, we will get with the business. We'll see if we can get this mic to pick up as much as possible here. We have two things we're going to go through. The first is the oath of office that I will swear, Chris, too. And then the second is the criminal justice code of ethics. And for the sake of time, I'm not going to read through it, but I will have him sign that as well. Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christopher Pierce-
I, Christopher Pierce-
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution-
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution-
And laws of the United States-
And laws of the United States-
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon-
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon-
The laws and ordinances of the city of Sherwood-
The laws and ordinances of the city of Sherwood-
And the rules and regulations of the Sherwood Police Department-
And the rules and regulations of the Sherwood Police Department-
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully-
Honestly-
Honestly-
And impartially-
And impartially-
Discharge the duties of the office of police officer-
Discharge the duties of the office of police officer-
During my continuance therein-
During my continuance therein-
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Sign right there. And I actually have it with me here. Oftentimes, I forget the most important piece. And I think the last time Captain Daniels scurried to the police department to get the badge for me. So, but I have it here. And I'm going to ask Chris's father, Jim Pierce, to come up and do the honors. Oh, stay right where you are. You can't run away from it. Okay, great. And why don't you just sign this one more?
So Chief, I'm going to, while he's signing that, going to push you on the spot. I think for the benefit of the council and the audience, Chris will not be seen around the streets of Sherwood right away because he is a recruit. Can you, in a couple sentences, explain the process from here on out? Because I think most people don't know what happens after tonight.
So Chris has begun, his first day was Monday, yesterday. And so he has begun a rigorous, for the most part, 18-month training process that will involve field training through the Sherwood Police Department and involve attendance at the Oregon Basic Police Academy in Salem through DPSST. So we will schedule him for basic academy based on when they have room. And so we'll get him started and have gotten him started on his field training. And then he will go to the academy at some point, come back and wrap up his field training. And once all the coaches have signed off that they've taught him everything they know and he's ready to be released, he will turn the keys on a patrol car all by himself and go from there. So it goes fast, but for us, it doesn't go fast enough. But it's good training and we have a great group of coaches that will really get him ready, so.
Well, congratulations to Chris. We welcome you and thank you for joining our fantastic police department. And we look forward to seeing you out on the beat. Okay, so we can move on to citizen comments. And thank you to his family for coming as well. Thank you very much. Citizen comments. The first citizen comment that I, form that I have is Yvonne Gebhardt. Would you like to come forward? Welcome, Yvonne.
So we have some new technology that we're breaking in. You do not have to get very close to these microphones, but you do turn it down a little bit.
Like that.
And is the blue light on?
Yes, the blue light is on.
I am Yvonne Gebhardt and my address is 22146 Southwest Orland Street in Sherwood. As a 20-plus-year resident of Sherwood, it has been really something to live through the growth and prosperity of our community. And this evening, I would like to share with you what I believe are topics of great importance to Sherwood. First is to support families by making sure that city government has done all within the law, including Second Amendment rights, to provide protection of people and property through police and law enforcement with continued swift response of emergency personnel. Next is supporting Sherwood families by maintaining a business-friendly environment and free-market approach to growth and policies that affect commerce. Parks and recreation are essential to a healthy, balanced community where members of our community can relax mind, body, and spirit. The budget process is essential to our community's peace of mind in not incurring debt without positive revenue options, planning and avoiding government growth in the name of community growth. Second is transportation, which includes scheduled and consistent street maintenance and supporting these in the budget. Many of the major arterials that we use are actually governed and maintained by other governmental entities. And maintaining intergovernmental representation for Sherwood's interests as we grow is paramount. Third is Sherwood's infrastructure through utilities and water. Finally, informing and providing educational opportunities to constituents on the workings, processes, and procedures involved in keeping our municipality vibrant and law-abiding and, most importantly, continued encouragement for civic duty and involvement in our form of government. In closing, I want to encourage each one of our honorable members of the city council by saying that each of you is a very special and important resource to Sherwood. To stay positive and communicate with bounds, within the bounds of love and respect. But if there is no love... We still have a minute and 14 seconds.
So you go ahead?
If there's no love, then at the very least, respect the office for which each of you holds.
Thank you, Yvonne. I've got Jennifer Fagerstrom? Or Fagerstrom, sorry. Now that I saw you. Ready, set, go.
My name is Jennifer Fagerstrom, 23897 Southwest Sanders Terrace in Sherwood. And I am a member of the Sherwood Main Street Board of Directors. And on behalf of the board, we wanted to officially welcome all of our new councilors and our new mayor and congratulate you. We're looking forward to working together with the council, with the Sherwood Main Street program in the coming months and years. And as some of you are, actually several of you, are new to the council, you may not be familiar with Sherwood Main Street. So we thought we would do a very quick primer tonight and share with you some of our objectives and goals and kind of who we are and what we do. So we partner with Main Streets across Oregon. Some of our sister cities include McMinnville, Tigard, Hillsborough, others such as that. And our goal is to see our Old Town revitalized and to drive tourism and activity, which will ultimately help our community and our business thrive. We also provide Old Town support to large-scale events such as Cruisin', Robin Hood Festival, St. Patrick's Day, and others. And this year, we're actually coordinating the Halloween festivities, so we're looking forward to that. We also partner with local community organizations such as the Historical Society and the Chamber of Commerce. We have two board members who are serving as chamber ambassadors. We're also excited about the opening of the new Center of Arts in Old Town and look forward to partnering with Maggie and her team. We've had the privilege to work closely with your top-notch city staff over the last several years. And Sherwood Main Streets had the privilege to be a liaison between the city staff and the business community. For example, we coordinated regular opportunities for city staff and business owners to come together during the Old Town Street Project last year. And this forum allowed for questions and concerns to be raised and addressed and kept lines of communication open. We also anticipate that there will continue to be a need for this type of liaise work, particularly after the new center opens, because that's going to provide a lot of opportunities for Old Town business. It also will come with its own challenges. As we all know from other events, anytime you bring 400 people into Old Town, there's always both opportunities and challenges, everything from parking to businesses staying open late and other such things. So as our Old Town continues to grow, we look forward to working with this council. And we do want to formally request that the council reassign a liaison to our Board of Directors. This will keep those lines of communication open and assure maximum benefit to Old Town, particularly as we have further conversations about economic growth opportunities. Our regular general meetings generally have upwards of 20 community members and business owners in attendance. We have 10 active board members. And whatever counselor participates on the board will really have their ear to the ground in terms of what the local constituency is really talking about and getting involved with. And Sherwood Main Street is also a volunteer-led organization. Not sure if you're aware of that. We do not have any paid staff. Over the last year and a half, it's been primarily funded by four board members, although our map project, which you should, there's some samples there for you to have, was funded through support from local businesses. And we've distributed the historical map as well as the business map. And then now we're working on a winery map, which will be distributed as well to drive some tourism down into town. Those have been really, really well received. And we will be looking for other funding opportunities to fund that, of course. So we'd like to request a future time, I've got 30 seconds, to come and give a more thorough presentation on Sherwood Main Street, its goals and projected outcomes for the coming year. We'd also like to engage more fully with the city related to economic development. So thank you all for letting me come and present. Questions?
Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Thank you.
So currently, we are running on a skeletal crew because we have two vacancies. And so I served on the, as the liaison to the Sherwood Main Street. And I will tell all of you, it is a great program. Thoroughly enjoyed being your liaison. And when we have a full council in May, I will be assigning you a liaison.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bud Ranson. Hi there. Go ahead and sit down and just state your name and your address. And then you can go ahead.
Okay, I'm Bud Ranson. I live in 157045 Sherwood, over here. Three years ago, I was asked by a member of the Sherwood High School to place a slab up there for their batting cages, which we did. And they wanted to bid, and I gave them a bid of 14,000 bucks. And we decided, since I have an over-40 men's senior league semi-pro team, that we could use the field. So everything's been great for three years. And now all of a sudden, they're telling me, they want me to pay 1,000 bucks to use the field. And I talked to the Parks Department over here, Lance Gilligan. He told me I had to come talk to you guys to see if I can get that grandfathered in. So who do I talk to, you guys?
Well, I would say that we would go to Joe to get some additional information on this.
Yeah, let me get your contact information and then I'll have my staff get back to you. So this is the first I've heard of this. So I don't know the history and the relationship, so.
Who are you?
I'm the city manager. So I'll give you my card and I'll work with my staff to find out what we can do and what we can't do, so.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Yeah.
Did you have anything else? Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you want to speak, you can fill out a form. Do you want to speak? They're right in the back. And you can go ahead. And I don't have any other forms. And so if you want to just fill that out and come on forward and hand it in, you just go right ahead. You can come forward and fill it out and give it to Sylvia afterwards. That's totally fine. Just state your full name and your address and then you can go ahead.
My name is Michelle Boyle. I live at 22716 Southwest Lincoln Street. If you're a baby boomer and your kids have grown and moved out and you like to downsize to a home with less expense and upkeep, what are your options here in Sherwood? If you have aging parents who you want to live near you, but not with you, and they have limited income but aren't ready for assisted living, what are our options here in Sherwood? If you've recently graduated from college, got a new job, you have student loans to pay, you want to live a simple, car-free existence while you still want, you have the ability to stay engaged in your community, what are our options here in Sherwood? My name is Michelle Boyle. I'm a Sherwood resident for eight years. I'm here to begin a dialogue about tiny houses. I'm here to be an advocate for socially and fiscally responsible living. As you may know, I'm building a tiny house right now in the driveway of my rental home just up the hill. When I'm done, I'd like to consider moving out of my rental home and into my tiny home. But what are my options if I want to do so and stay in Sherwood? Let me be clear, apartment living is really not for everybody. Our aging population may have difficulty climbing stairs. And I can assure you, growing young families living in our community do not enjoy lugging groceries and strollers up several flights of stairs either. If you personally had the choice between living in a quaint, small cottage or an apartment, renting an apartment with a pool you never use, which would you choose? I've been invited to come here today to share my opinion on what can and what should be done with the newly annexed area west of Sherwood. In my opinion, Sherwood has an amazing opportunity to set themselves apart once again from our sprawling neighbors and to consider a more thoughtful and sustainable living options, like tiny house community. Not everybody needs or can sustain a 2,300-square-foot house. And the recent downturn in the economy has proven that bigger is not always better. While I understand that many of our developer friends may initially favor apartments and large homes for their positive return on investment, when you consider the carbon footprints or the average sustained home values per square foot, I would encourage them, and I would encourage you, to take another look. You would have to be in a cave to not have noticed that tiny houses are gaining popularity on all fronts. Empty nesters, baby boomers, recent college grads, and small families with their eyes on sustainability are all eyeing the financial advantages of living responsibly. These are not poor residents that have no other options but to live tiny. They instead, and like myself, look forward to spending less on housing costs so we can actually give more and spend more time with dining out, traveling, contributing more to our time, of our time and money, to nonprofits and art-focused organizations. If you were in charge of recruiting perfect residents for Sherwood, aren't those the kinds of people you would want to attract? If you want to gain national spotlight for being a progressive, socially and environmentally responsible town, shouldn't you consider zoning rules, which encourage the lifestyles that focus on those goals? I'm here to start the dialogue. But I'm not just here to start the dialogue and leave it up to you to finish it. What can I do? Who do I talk to? How do I make this happen? What committee should I join? What other evidence would you like me to present? I may be the only person who stands before you to talk about tiny houses, but rest assured, it's only because so many have not actively considered the out-of-box thinking that they require. Once you think about it, tiny homes and communities make a lot of sense. They make sense for us all, residents and townships alike, and are something that even the most extreme of community activists will no doubt rally behind.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Could you just fill out the form?
Thank you for your time.
Can I ask her a quick question?
Absolutely, yeah.
You said you're building one?
Yes.
So when it's done, can we come see it?
Actually, I'm having a, I'm having an almost-opened house, actually this Sunday. And so it's about 50 or 60% done. If you want to see one in construction-
I absolutely would love to see it.
Me too. Yeah, it's at 1:00 on Sunday, 22716 Lincoln. I invite anybody to come. So far, we have 40 people RSVP'd, so it's going to be a party.
Forty-two. Forty-two? Forty-three. And maybe my husband-
I can tell you that there's not 42 parking spaces on Lincoln.
No.
Will walk.
So you can hike from here. You can hike from there.
Actually, if you park at Snyder, you can walk straight down and MJ's house is on the right. I've already been there to see it. In fact, she partnered with Public Works-
Yes.
-to get some materials from the home that's off of Elworth because she wanted to use some recyclable-
Materials.
Materials and-
So it's about halfway done. I will have a big grand opening when it's completely done. But a lot of people are just as interested in the construction of these houses and they want to look at them. They're built just like residential homes. They're two-by-fours and plumbing and electrical.
And does this one happen to be on wheels? Because I know a lot of them are on the trailers.
Yes, it does. Yeah, mine is on an eight-foot wide by 24-foot-long triple-axle trailer.
Okay.
Yeah. It's actually kind of big. If you look at the ones on TV, probably your first reaction will be, oh, it's so big, so.
I was just showing my daughter a community of them where they were all in a thing. She was fascinated.
So even if Sherwood decides not to necessarily embrace tiny houses on wheels, there's a lot of opportunities for tiny houses.
Yes, there are.
You know, again, cottage-type living. There's just a lot of opportunities. And I think it's a real opportunity to add some diversity to our housing and diversity to our population and gain, again, a lot of notoriety in the meantime.
Thanks for starting the conversation. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. There's a lot of great neighborhoods like that on the East Coast that have that entire concept. And it's fascinating. It's a great concept, yeah.
So Mayor and Council, she has some questions about where to go to and we'll follow up. The Planning Commission and Julia's staff, I mean, both Sherwood West, which is not annexed in the city, so I want to just clarify for the public. But in terms of developing rules and consideration, I think it's something that the Planning Commission, maybe you guys have already talked about it.
Two things, I don't have a microphone, but we are recruiting for the Planning Commission. So that's one great way to consider getting involved is actually applying for, or participating in the Planning Commission. We do have accessory structure regulations, so that may be kind of what you're talking about. So there already is that possibility. But we just talked about more, you know, how to make that now sticking in the structure.
So you can get Ms. Boyle an application for Planning Commission, should she wish to apply? And also talk to her more about her tiny house. Thank you so much for coming forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Who gets this? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No additional citizen comments? All right. Onto new business. Resolution 2015-027, assessing sidewalk construction costs on 22050 Southwest Hall Place, Sherwood, Oregon 97140, and directing city recorder to enter such assessment in the city's lean docket. Craig Sheldon?
So this is part of our sidewalk assistance program. This property at the address the mayor had mentioned has not, has signed up for the agreement but has not come through on all the payments yet. And we would like to work with this property owner, but we're also asking the amended item that Sylvia had put together is to move it out till June 1st to see if we can collect payment. And you guys are the ones that have to authorize for being able to place a lean on a property for the sidewalk program.
So I'm confused. You're asking us to approve an extension before this is returned to us in the form of resolution?
So how this works is we have to place this on the council agenda. So then the property owner's been notified a minimum of 15 times, if not more. It went on the, it goes on the council packet, as well as another letter gets sent out at the same time letting the property owner know that they can come to tonight's council meeting to, similar to a hearing process. At that time, they received a letter from the city. They called and made another payment and asked if they could wait till they got their tax return. So we ask on the amended, to push it out till June 1st before City Recorder can actually move forward with the lien. So hopefully, they will pay their bill, and we don't have to do the lien process.
So Craig, at this point, you're amending the resolution to ask for an extension?
So you have a new resolution in front of you tonight? No?
No.
No, Craig, sorry. The council does not have a resolution in front of them. The, what Craig is asking is to amend the resolution, and staff has looked at some language if the council so chose to consider that, just to add some additional language extending the effectiveness of adding the property to the lien document, lien docket effective June, June 1st, Craig? Effective June 1st. So the resolution, if you chose, would be adopted, it would be effective, but that property owner would not go on a lien docket, allowing them time to pay that balance until June 1st. So that is the amendment the staff is looking at. If you want to consider that, we'll provide you with language.
Is council interested in considering that?
I have a couple of questions first. How much have they paid? And what type of payment did they just make?
They just made a $100 payment. I believe the bill was around $800 and some dollars, nine, almost 900. And it's, so it's down to $200. And they said they would, as soon as they got their tax return, they would pay it.
So they have actively been communicating and making payments with you?
They have been, yes. And then they've missed some on their monthly payments, but we give them 12 months to pay. So the 12-month come up in the end of December. And then they have several notices been sent out, as our code states, and it has to come in front of you before we can move forward. So we move forward because we hadn't heard anybody from anybody for a while, and then we actually, the letter that went to them saying that was coming to council, that actually got attention, and they called, and we were able to work some stuff out. So I'd like to, I would like to give them the opportunity to pay the bill before the lien process, and that's what Sylvia and I had talked about.
I'm late on my HOA bill, so I'm fine letting them have it.
And they indicated that they would, they would pay that once they got their taxes, tax returns back, which would, is that correct?
Yes, they'd ran into some hardships. And they said they would pay once they got their. I mean, the deal, the deal is if they don't pay, and you guys approve this as June 1st, we'll put a lien on the property for the sidewalk program.
Okay, it seems reasonable to. I'd like to hear the language.
So the language is under Section 2 of the Whereas's. It is after the first sentence, where it reads, "The City Council directs the City Recorder to enter the assessment in the docket of city liens." The amendment would be, comma, "Effective July 1, June 1, 2015, if not paid in full, period."
Not paid in full by that date.
Correct. Well, you don't have to, you don't have to add that additional language by that date because it already states the date. So the amendment would be to amend Section 2 of Resolution, Sentence 1, removing the period after city liens and adding the language "effective June 1, 2015, if not paid in full, period."
I move that we amend the Resolution 2015-027 as stated by our City Recorder.
And then you would also need a remit as to the amount, so you would, Section 1 would then be reduced to 200.
Counselor, what we risk with adjusting the amount is if the, if the customer comes in and makes $50 payments, then this resolution is then incorrect. The, the bottom line is, is the record will show that the amount that's going to go on the city's lien docket is the unpaid balance. So we don't indicate an amount, allowing the customer to come in and make whatever payments up until June 1.
Okay, so no payment will be listed then?
Correct.
Well, doesn't Section 1 say $300 is due?
Yes, but at this time, the, the customer's already paid $100. So actually, the balance is a $200 balance as of tonight.
Which is why I said, so should we change Section 1 to say 200 instead of 300?
Oh, sure, we can do that, sure.
I amend my motion to include changing the amount from 300 to 200. Do I have a second on my motion to amend the resolution?
Second. Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Mayor, you have a motion, your first motion, and you don't have a second yet? So do you want to?
She just seconded it.
Your first motion or your second motion?
Okay, you know what? I am removing my motions from the table, and I'm going to make a new motion.
Perfect.
So my new motion is to amend Resolution 2015-027 as recommended by our City Recorder Sylvia Murphy to also change the amount owed from 300 to 200. I need a second?
Second.
All in favor of the amended resolution?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, we have an amended resolution.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you again. Do you also, do you also plan on amending a motion for Section 2? That was my original statement, is, is that was your original motion? And you didn't have a second for that one?
I incorporated what you, your recommenda, I incorporated all of your recommendations
In your motion.
in my motion.
Thank you.
Is that council's understanding?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I hear that is council's understanding that my motion amended to include all of the changes that you recommended.
Thank you.
Okay, then, I now move that we approve Resolution 2015-027 as amended. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very much, Craig. We'll move on to Resolution 2015-028, authorizing City Manager to enter into a professional services contract with AMAC Foster Wheeler for environmental consultant services associated with the Tannery Brownfield site assessment. Julia Hyde.
And Mayor, may I say a few words? Okay, so I am an employee of AMAC, as is my husband. We're geologists and project managers for AMAC, which is a multinational global company with about 40,000 people in various offices across the globe. We have an office in Tigard, and we have a nationally recognized brownfields expert and his team prepared a proposal in response to the city's request for proposals to work on the Tannery Brownfields project. So he and his team put together a proposal. They went and he and his team conducted an interview, went to an interview process, excuse me, and they intend to work on the Tannery project under a grant. My husband and I did not have any role in the proposal or the interview and do not intend to have a role in the project. However, in the interest of avoiding any conflict of interest, I'll be recusing myself from discussion and from the vote, so.
All right, thank you. All right, Julia.
Thank you. Counselor Kuiper actually said a little bit of my intro. But just a little bit of background. The city received a grant from the EPA in, well, we submitted a grant in January of 2014. And actually, AMAC Foster Wheeler pro bono helped assist us with submitting the grant application. They understood that they would have to go through an RFP process and be judged fairly, but they do that for, for many jurisdictions around the state. And they don't always get the, you know, contract award either, and they understand that. EPA awarded us the grant in late June, early July of 2014, and we submitted some additional paperwork to finalize that late August. The grant period is actually from October 2014 to October 2017, so it's a long process, but it's a $200,000 grant. The consultant piece that was budgeted in the EPA grant was 143,300, I believe, yes, 143,300. We went through, I, I actually prepared the RFP. I consulted with some other jurisdictions that had done brownfield RFPs to do that. We opened it up. It actually was opened on November 4th and was open until November 26th. And that's actually an error in your staff report. I said October 30th through November 24th. That was my original intent, but I had gotten delayed. And I, when I was preparing the staff report, I was looking at the first RFP. We had, because we're not brownfield experts here at the city, we had internal staff review the RFP, but we also got assistance from, staff from Oregon DEQ as well as someone from Business Oregon, which is the State Economic Development Agency, helped us score the proposals. We had two, top two, we interviewed, and AMAC Foster Wheeler was the consultant firm that we selected unanimously from that interview process. So what is in front of you is basically a resolution that would authorize the City Manager to enter into a contract with AMAC Foster Wheeler for up to $143,300. There's a little bit of contingency in there, so their actual budget came in a little bit less than that, but there's some contingency up to that EPA grant-funded amount. It's 100% covered by that EPA grant, so there are no costs to the city other than we pay the bill, we submit the invoice to EPA, and then get reimbursed for that. And because this was not included in this fiscal year's budget, because we actually hadn't gotten the award for it yet, there'll be a supplemental budget coming in the future to just sort of document the, the revenue in and the expenditure out, which should be net zero because it's fully funded. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I have a question. When was the selection made? When, I heard you say when the RFP was
Yeah, I, I don't know the exact date. It was early January that the selection was made.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I motion that we approve Resolution 2015-028.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries? Counsel Kuiper, you may join us again. See to me, Andrew.
I have two items tonight, Mayor and Counsel. The first is a reminder, once again, we are getting much closer to the opening of our new Sherwood Center for the Arts on February 28th. So I encourage everyone to mark your calendars to come. I think it's 11:30 to 3:00. Okay, I'll, I'll stop. Sorry, Counselor Harris. The other thing, I know that under consent tonight, you appointed members to a new advisory board, the Police Advisory Board, which I think we're all very excited. A number of those folks are here in audience. And I was just going to ask maybe if the new members of the Police Advisory Board, if you could stand just quickly?
Thank you so much for coming.
I want to thank them for their patience. This process took a little longer than maybe normal, but I think we're going to have a great board. Counsel, Counselor Linda Henderson is liaison to the committee. I think they're going to have a pretty full plate pretty quickly. And I think marijuana is something that they're probably going to grapple with very soon. So welcome aboard. Any questions for myself or the staff that are here?
All right, I'm going to let Counsel King go so that he can, go ahead, Counsel King. What did he say?
He voted yes.
Okay, all right. Counselor Cook?
I just want to mention that one of our local Cub Scout packs, thanks to the effort of Jackie's daughter, Cub Scout Pack 710 is currently selling raffle tickets for the opportunity to win two round-trip domestic airline tickets on Southwest Airlines. And only a limited number of tickets will be sold. For more information, you can contact cubmasters710@pack710.com or any of your local Cub Scouts. The drawing is going to be held the second week of March.
Thank you.
Well, Joe stole my thunder, but we had our cultural arts meeting last night. And if you haven't received this in the mail, you might be. It's very pretty. The invitation for the grand opening of the Sherwood Center for the Arts. It's 11 to 3. There'll be snacks provided by Sweet Story, and also Sesame Donuts has donated donut holes, drinks from the city of Sherwood, and also there is rumored to be some drinks coming from Symposium. Not confirmed yet, but I'm sure they'll kick in. There's self-guided tours. You'll be able to see all of the facility, including the sound areas, the dressing rooms. There's going to be live entertainment on the stage throughout the entire event. There'll be art activities for the kids and adults, and some take-home souvenirs to remember the event. So it, it will be a pretty great day at the, for Sherwood. There's been a ton of buzz, not just here in Sherwood, but a lot of people around the community and around Washington County talking about how amazing it is that a community like Sherwood and the size of Sherwood has a performing arts center coming to it. It's kind of unheard of for a community of this size to have something of this caliber going in. And everybody is really excited about it, and not just Sherwoodians. But we had people at our commission last night from Dayton, from Tooleton, and people are really, really excited about it. And Sherwood should be super proud of themselves for getting this in, and it's pretty exciting. Also, we have two, speaking of exciting, there's two vacancies on that committee. And Mayor Clark and I were discussing it. This is such an exciting time for the arts right now in Sherwood that it's crazy that we don't have 100 applications. So tell your friends.
They're coming. I know they're coming. That's why.
Tell your friends. Anyone who is remotely interested in the arts, even if they like looking at the arts, you don't have to be an artist to be on the Cultural Arts Committee. I am not an artist, and I go to the meetings. You really don't. The, the people that we've had applications in the past were not all artists. So all you have to do is enjoy art, find it interesting. You do not have to be an artist. So if you're interested, or you know somebody who might be interested, they only meet once a month. It's not a huge time commitment, but it's a really fun meeting. I actually look forward to going to those meetings. I told them last night, it's probably the funnest meeting I go to each month. No offense to the current, hey, people! But it is a really fun meeting. So if you need something to do once a month that is, is really quite fun, I would encourage you to apply. Thanks for coming tonight also.
Thank you. Counsel President Robinson?
As liaison to both the Planning Commission and the Sherwood West Concept Plan liaison, I want to extend once again an invitation to come to our meetings. I don't recall specifically what we're discussing next Tuesday at 7 o'clock. It's our Planning Commission meeting. It's our regular meeting. They're opposite the City Council meetings on Tuesday nights. Because of the fact that Measure 91 passed, we are in a very interesting time, and we'd really like to get the citizens' comment on the marijuana issues that are coming up. They really involve two things. One is medical marijuana regulation, and the other is recreational use marijuana regulation. And they're two very different things with very different deadlines. And so we're going to be addressing medical, yeah, medical marijuana dispensaries first. And we'd love to get any input that you have on that. Secondly, our Sherwood West Concept Plan has had their initial meeting, went very well. I think we're looking for a different location so that more people can come and hear all the testimony. The speaker, the microphones at Edie Ridge did not reach to almost all of the participants on the committee, let alone the citizens who were there to participate and listen. So we are searching for a different location, and we welcome you to that. I keep mentioning that because I think there's some misinformation out there about what Sherwood West Concept Plan is. And I really urge you to both attend the meetings and to read about it on the city's website, which, if you haven't noticed, is a new revamped website. It's just great. I have looked through it, and it's just, I think it's awesome. I think they've done a very good job. So please, please come to those two things. Secondly, I just wanted to extend my thanks to the staff for all of their efforts. They've been making quite a bit of effort for us new council members to learn all the avenues that the city government undertakes every day. And it's quite overwhelming and more than extensive. And we take our jobs very seriously. In addition to welcoming your input, we have been getting some new inquiries and some old inquiries of, you know, I mentioned this at one point, you know, what could, maybe you can look at it again. And please, if you have those concerns, we'd love to hear from you because we are open to looking at any issue and every issue that we can that brings to our attention. But Craig did a wonderful presentation on water for us, and it's a very interesting history that we've had here in Sherwood. And so please feel free to talk to us about it if you have an interest. And thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you. Counsel Kuiper?
Well, I have one announcement. Has everyone seen this? This is a puzzle piece. The Sherwood Foundation for the Arts is having a puzzle contest on Saturday. And I love puzzles, so I signed, I signed "moi" up for the puzzle. And I love puzzles, so I signed, I signed moi up for the puzzle, as well as my family. Unfortunately, two of them have decided not to participate. So it will be me and my husband. We will have our T-shirt that say the Hyper Kipers. And we will be in this contest. And we're going to do our best, given our puzzle, you know, ability. But anyway, it's going to be a fun, a, a fun time. So if you haven't heard about this, you like to do puzzles, it will be at the police station next Saturday.
This Saturday?
This Saturday. Whoa, thank you, Counselor Henderson. The twenty-first. I think eleven to, ten to eleven, or eleven to, oh, I guess. It's not on here.
Oh, heavens.
One to three is the adult competition. So there's two different competitions, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. And it's going to be a really fun venue. So if you can't participate this year, try participating next year. I also want to thank all of you for coming. It means so much to us up here. When you get a chance to sit up here on the dice, you really don't know what's coming at you. I still don't know what's coming at me half the time. But having everyone out there in the audience and, and listening is, is, it definitely supports us. I also would like to extend my thanks to the staff. You guys have been amazing with all of our questions, entertaining question after question and giving us so much information. It really is a lot. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson?
Thanks for stealing my puzzle thunder. That's okay. As mentioned previously, the new police advisory board, I'm hoping, wink, wink, chief, that will get started next month. Okay? And looking forward to that. And of course, those meetings will be open to the public. So even if you're not appointed to the board, there's ample opportunity to come and give feedback to staff or to members of the committee. I know that there is one member who already posted something on Facebook that basically said, I've been appointed. That was a little premature, but it's a done deal now. And encouraging people to reach out to her and give feedback or come to the meetings when they get started. And I think that it will be an exciting new thing for Sherwood to do. And thank the members who came tonight. Sorry we didn't swear you in like our police officer. Just repeating some of the same from last meeting, Mary Poppins, first two weekends in March over at the Sherwood Center for the Arts. It'll be the first production in the center. And I was there on Friday thinking, what an amazing facility. We will have the ability to promote and advertise and have events here that we had no other facility available for in Sherwood. So very exciting times for us. It was a long time coming, third time's a charm from the building standpoint. Counselor Kuiper already mentioned the puzzle competition. I am the liaison to the Community Development Block Grant Program. That's a, essentially a three-tier program that's federally funded through Washington County. And it's for many different kinds of capital as well as service projects. We always have more grants requested than we have money. It's a very well-run program through the Office of Community Development through Washington County. And we just had our meeting last Thursday where we were awarding our recommendations up to the county commissioners board. And again, we had more grants than, we had money to give out. Two things I wanted to make of note. One project that is extremely interesting, if you're, if you're talking about, as MJ was talking about, doing something unique, something that's not done either in Oregon or maybe in the West. The city of Cornelius is partnering with Biennestar to build a library in their core downtown, library on the bottom and, and senior living on the top. And what it is, it's, it's a, it's a public-private partnership where they're able to provide senior living and in exchange, seniors who live there also volunteer in the library. And it is a public-private partnership, not replicated anywhere in the United States, and in the little town of Cornelius. Which most people just drive through from the way to Hillsborough to get to Forest Grove or, you know, to head to the beach. And so, and the format of the library was probably the most amazing outline that I've ever seen. And so that is one program that was, did receive funding. Of course, it still has to go to the county commissioners. And then the other one is, Project Homeless Connect is a program in Washington County that's run through Sunrise Church, which is in Hillsborough. And the person who's been running that program, her name is Kim Marshall, and she lives in Sherwood. So they had requested a fifty thousand dollar grant. And what Project Homeless is, is twice a year, they coordinate with medical, dental, the employment office, and they bring all of these, kind of like a trade show, to the church, contact homeless members in the community, know they can come and get their teeth fixed or get eyeglasses or have an exam or get their haircut or find out about getting a job or find out about housing options. And I met her during their presentations and she has been doing this for ten years, lives in Sherwood, has a young family. And you just never know who you're going to meet, who lives here, who understands what makes Sherwood a great place to live, but actually spends her time helping people don't live in Sherwood who are homeless. And has already been doing this for ten years. So it was a great honor to meet her. Her presentation was very, very compelling and very compassionate. And I hope that the county commissioners, you know, award her program. And what they do is they were asking for a grant that funds them for two years so they don't have to come back every year. And so it was a great opportunity to meet one of our own residents who does something very special, who impacts people's lives, basic needs lives on a day-to-day basis. And so I, I just wanted to mention her, her staff and other people who work in those agencies. But when she came to make the presentation, we had a little break and then she came out and introduced herself. And, and it made me proud to think that, that somebody chose to live in Sherwood and, but doesn't necessarily abandon the cause that's near and dear to them. The only other thing is the Tom Grant Concert, which we'll be holding at the Sherwood Center for the Arts, which is on March twentieth. That's a people-to-person fundraiser for a couple of kids who are going on a people-to-person exchange. Only two of eight in the entire state and two of them are from Sherwood. I think that bodes well for Sherwood as well. So that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Henderson. So I wanted to announce tomorrow night, the Growler House is going to be having their one-year anniversary celebration. They're going to have a ribbon cutting as well. That will be six to seven. The ribbon cutting will be at six-thirty. I'll be there with the owner, cutting that ribbon and celebrating their one year here in Sherwood. Great, great business. So come on out and support them. That's the Growler House, right near McDonald's. On, then on Friday, the, we're having the Sherwood Police Awards Banquet at Bellevia. And I'm excited to attend that. And with our new police advisory board, I think that's going to be pretty exciting to have a big celebration about our police. And then on Saturday, we've got a lot this week. And then on Saturday, if you have time, I think it would be awesome. I've been to this event, it is fantastic. It's swinging with spaghetti at the Sherwood High School. It supports the band programming. It's great. Go Sherwood High School. Saturday, lot of fun. Lots of great music. Lots of fun.
Fantastic. The kids.
The kids are great.
Play jazz at this venue. Amazing.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Next week, I know that Counselor Harris and myself, I didn't know anyone else had RSVP'd, are going to attend the city day at the Capitol. So that should be exciting. I know that you're there, Counselor Cook, all the time. And it might be right now a little more exciting than we anticipated when we signed up a couple of months ago. But hey, we're going to go. And I think it's going to be a great opportunity to talk to our state representative, who is John Davis, and Senator Kim Thatcher. And I know them both well, and I think we'll have a great day at the Capitol. On Saturday, February twentieth, they, has already been announced, the opening for our wonderful Center for the Arts. Also, the ribbon cutting will be at eleven-thirty, just so you know. So it, you said eleven-thirty, it, our opening set eleven to, and what's great about this is it's open from eleven to four. We're going to cut the ribbon at eleven-thirty, but everybody's going to get an opportunity to go around this amazing facility. And so come, come see the ribbon cutting, come, come for the excitement, but come to see this great new asset for our citizens and our whole surrounding communities as well. Everyone's excited about this. That is all I have for tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye? All right. Meeting adjourned.